Are we doing that?
Okay. We're working out citizens comments for the jury here.
For what?
Yeah, I sent her a text to ask her if she was still there.
Oh.
Uh, Corinne Obar. She's a, she's not a city resident, she lives out in the park. So I don't know what she was hearing from.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, are we ready? Back into open session. Next is community, do we have anybody here for citizens comments? All right. Next, do you want to do? Penning, okay. So we have a wonderful night tonight. We are penning Officer Brad Alterman. Please come forward, everybody.
Come on down.
Brad came onto our department back November two thousand twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty. And ever since he got here, he's been just a big, huge asset. He is a jack of all trades. He's a great cop, he's a great mechanic, he's great at almost everything. This is our quasi-computer guy, our radio guy, our everything guy. We've already officially made him the corporal. Today, what we're doing is the penning ceremony, which is important to law enforcement. And as is tradition, we would ask if anybody would like to pin him. Would you like to pin him? Corporal Alterman, thank you for your services as an officer. I look forward to your future service as a supervisor. Thank you, sir.
Hold on.
Family photo.
The entire department.
I just wanted to say congratulations, young man.
Thank you. Love this area.
Congratulations.
Congrats. That's beautiful. Beautiful. Okay, so we have our second beautiful thing that's about to happen. We are doing an appointment of B. White to Deputy City Clerk.
Yes, Tracy and I are tired. Not gonna lie, it's a lot. So bringing me on as an additional Deputy City Clerk is really gonna help the two of us a lot. So we're hoping that, um, people from the country might for that position and help us.
I was wondering, because I was like, um, are you leaving?
No.
Yeah.
Is there a, is there a ceremony today?
Well, you have to vote on it.
We have to vote.
And then I have to swear.
Okay, so we do that.
And then family photo time.
And a better family.
Okay. All right, so can I get a motion for us to appoint B. White to Deputy City Clerk? Bill, Councilman Farnum has motioned second. You, Robert Rice, second.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Blan?
Yes.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, B. White.
I, B. White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Deputy City Clerk.
Of Deputy City Clerk.
Of the City of Waynesville.
Of the City of Waynesville.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Observe, protect, and defend.
The constitutions of the United States.
The constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all the laws of the state.
The provisions of all the laws of the state.
Affecting cities in the third class.
Affecting the cities of the third class.
And the ordinances of the City of Waynesville.
And the ordinances of the City of Waynesville.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
In office.
In office.
And respect the competences.
And respect the competences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
Pressure's on. What you don't know is Michelle and Tracy are leaving now.
City Administrator.
Okay, the Waynesville Park Board was scheduled for January ninth. There was no meeting held. Through the, uh, I guess, through the course of time here, we've ran through Ruby Doo Park flood damage update. So this is something that I was gonna bring to council. January eighth, twenty twenty five, City of Waynesville received a letter from FEMA declaring that the President of the United States signed a disaster declaration for the state of Missouri regarding the storms that occurred on November third through November ninth, twenty twenty four. So after receiving that letter, FEMA actually held a meeting, FEMA, FEMA held a meeting on January fourteenth to determine the next steps in the local recovery effort. Kind of wanted to put that out there, there are a lot of questions as to, uh, why, you know, why is the city not repairing the park? Why is this going on, why is that going on? Again, it's a process. Keep in mind, that process involves not only insurance through the city for the flood damage, but also FEMA, FEMA recovery efforts. And we're trying to tie those together as, as we move down the, um, down the path for recovery. The next meeting of the park board is February thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Utility Committee was scheduled for the sixth. Due to weather, it was postponed to the thirteenth, but was held the thirteenth. In the utility committee, we had a really good conversation about hometown grid and how to utilize that and the benefits for the community and residents that that provides for power and water avenues. We gave an update on the Plaskett County Sierra District Agreement. It was our first month of service over there and what that looked like. I will tell you that in that discussion, we recognized that really all of the, all of the projections were on course, were on track. Everything seemed to be, you know, well within our projection. I did, uh, this was a pump though, this, so this was a pump that quit working. And if you look on the impeller, you will see a rock. But when you hear a pump chattering in a workstation, it makes you extremely nervous, especially when you just purchased this, uh, system. However, the chattering was a rock, which we pulled the pump, got the rock out, and it is up and working. We had department updates. We discussed an emergency services tax. You will see this slide over and over. We ran a discussion of an emergency services tax through every committee within the city to openly talk about that, open session in committee systems. You will see it on the agenda tonight as well. And, and how that, how, when, percentages through every committee. And I think you will hear some discussion about that proposal tonight as well. Then office hours. We discussed office hours within the city and the changing of the office hours. The City of Waynesville's new office hours are eight AM to four PM. Those office hours will become effective February third, twenty twenty five. The next meeting for utility committee is February third. Starting with now economic development. Again, economic development was on the sixth, due to weather, rescheduled to the thirteenth. Business Spotlight is Lost in the Woods Antiques. And it's always a lot of pressure when you're, uh, have Lee Charnon open the, uh, council meeting. Nobody wants to follow that act, but I did hear her talk about Dave at, uh, at Lost in the Woods. So it's really kind of cool that, that she had those gifts from him here tonight. Economic development. Doug Potts informed the committee that we were the recipient of a ten thousand dollar grant award, Welcome and Wayfinding Missouri Tourism Grant. We plan to utilize that grant for our Watch Fire signage project at Seventeen and Old Route sixty-six. SVP two application for plans and pages was approved. And there's the emergency services tax as well with the discussion through that committee. And the new office hours were discussed within that committee as well with, uh, just like the other committees. Next meeting scheduled for February third, twenty twenty five. Roads and Grounds, Street Department Updates, Emergency Services Tax, New Office Hours. Next meeting, February fourth. Emergency Services, Animal Shelter Updates, Police Department Updates. Just as a note, eight hundred ninety-seven total calls for service, three hundred ninety-three traffic stops. And you know that because of our dispatch. Dispatch provided eight hundred ninety-seven calls for service with Waynesville Police Department, an additional two hundred fifty-three calls for service with Richland PD. Fire Department Update was given at the committee. Emergency Services Tax was discussed there. And City Hall Hours were also discussed. Next meeting is scheduled for February sixth at four PM. Finance and Human Resources Committee gave an update of the CID. CID was record and roughly, almost eighty thousand, seventy-nine thousand. Emergency Services and Tax Discussion. Office Hours, next meeting, February sixth. Planning and Zoning, one fourteen twenty-five, meeting was held. Open public hearing, rezoning request from R three to C two for a property located at one oh three North Bates. Rezoning request was forwarded to Waynesville City Council. And that is also in a future consideration of the agenda tonight. Next meeting is scheduled for February eleventh, five thirty. No Board of Adjustments meeting was held. Next meeting is to be determined. Again, we only host these as, on a as-needed basis. Special Events, Eighteenth Annual Best Sapper, April twenty-sixth. And that kind of kicks off our park, uh, party down there. I call it a party because there's something happening in our park every day. So, uh, pretty excited to see that event go. And that's all I got. Any questions?
See, do they have any questions for John?
Little Hero still on schedule for spring?
Little Hero's is in the Ruby Doo Park.
Right.
I won't give a timeframe. Again, that is tied up in, uh, the meeting that we just had this week. And FEMA is involved, but yes, we are working to, that, that will be one of our main focuses to replace and or repair what needs to be completed there. That's probably one of our busiest features within the park.
I get asked all the time about it, that's why I bring it up.
Yeah, so I will tell you that, um, I think I'm trying to put this into perspective of what maybe people would be comfortable with, but maybe an analogy would be if you ever had a fender bender, you do not get your car fixed until you get the quotes and go through the insurance. So you can kind of be a racket to get that repaired. And, um, but it, it, it's worth the wait because I know that the repair of that needs to be appropriate. You don't want to, you know, uh, miss anything or have a, have a feature in their damage that you don't catch. But I will tell you that, yeah, I, I can see that. Our goal, to be honest, I'd like to have it known before the Sapper competition. Where our park is opening, full eye open at that point, you know, no, uh, no construction or major construction. That's gonna be a major project. But I don't know, that may be aggressive, but that's, that's my goal.
Thank you.
I've got a question about that. The damaged material that's piled up in front of it, is that gonna be removed? Or are you waiting until the settlement from FEMA, FEMA?
So the damaged material, we really didn't know, um, you know, with, so we have FEMA, FEMA, and insurance. So I didn't know what the insurance would want. Do they want it back? What could we do with it? Have we, so we just kind of kept everything, the material there to see, uh, what they would allow us to do with that material. But it won't stay there. We will have it removed.
Well, I'm surprised that you hadn't already hauled it off somewhere to get it out of the, out of the park. That's why I'm.
Yeah, so we didn't move it out of the park because they may come in and say, hey, some of these pieces are reusable. And instead of these two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, uh, flooring, if they see those mats, they may want to keep them.
You're referencing FEMA, FEMA?
Or insurance.
You think they're qualified to make that kind of decision?
They're going to insure it.
Well, they're the one that's paying for it. It's damaged and, uh, probably unhealthy.
No, I, I don't disagree, Bill. What I'm saying is, is I don't want to just throw it in the trash and then they come back and, you know, we've hauled it off to a transfer station and then they say, well, where's the material? Uh, we threw it away. Well, how do we know it was damaged?
Well, you know how slow it is, the way they move to, uh, reverse.
Painfully familiar with that, yes.
Okay, anything else for John? Okay, we'll move into council discussion. Are there any topics that anybody would like to discuss?
One discussion.
Yes.
There's a development going up. It's Briar Point Part Two right now. And today, they had, um, two residents' driveways in and exit to their house blocked with cement trucks. And, and they were there all day. So one of the persons complained because if there was an emergency, an ambulance wouldn't be able to get through, even if it was to pick up a worker that was injured back there or, um, the residents in the homes. So can they do something about that? I mean, I just had a call this afternoon, that's the only reason I'm asking now.
Yes, they can. They can actually, uh, there's several ways around that. You can contact us at City Hall, you can call dispatch, we can get our police involved. You know, the, if, if, uh, if the driveways were blocked all day, yeah, that's, that's absolutely something that, you know, no parking in front of the driveway, obviously, for a certain period of time. And if it was, uh, if it was all day blocked, that, that's something they should have or could have reached out to City Hall and or Police Department Dispatch. And we can go and look at that situation and remedy it immediately.
Let me tag on to that.
Okay.
There was a lady here at last month's council meeting. I think her name was Summers? And we had asked, uh, Sean, Sean Williams, talking about traffic on Lao Curtis. Same kind of thing, blocking traffic. We asked her to, if she, because this is a continual thing, we asked her to come to Road and Grounds to discuss it. She didn't, and we weren't sure where, um, she was talking about exactly. So if she's watching or watches this, please come in the next Road and Grounds on the Fourth of February so that we can, we can make sure we know where she was talking about. Because part of that, right, and where she was talking about is county, not city. So we weren't, we weren't sure. So I, I just thought I'd bring that up now.
Good to know. Yeah, very good. Okay, nothing else? We will go into items of consideration. Ordinances. First is a proposed ordinance authorizing the sales tax on the ballot for emergency services.
Okay, first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one. An ordinance imposing a sales tax for general revenue purposes to provide for emergency and non-emergency services at the rate of one percent pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Sections ninety-four point five one oh, RSMO, providing for submission, providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the municipal election called and to be held on Tuesday, the eighth day of April, twenty twenty-five, fixing an effective date. Second reading. An ordinance imposing a sales tax for general revenue purposes to provide for emergency and non-emergency services at the rate of one percent pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Sections ninety-four point five one oh, RSMO, providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the municipal election called and to be held on Tuesday, the eighth day of April, twenty twenty-five, fixing an effective date.
Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to April. And I can explain my justification now, or I can explain it if we have a second. I say.
Okay. Yeah, that was out, we need to discuss.
So when, when I look at everything, this is so near and dear to my heart that I want to make sure that we educate all seven thousand citizens, roughly. I, I'm not sure how many people will vote, but I want to make sure everybody understands why. I was, I was pushing hard for April, but once I found out that absentee ballots go out in four weeks for the April, um, initiative, I, I don't think we can educate the community before voting occurs. The second half of why I'm okay, I'm personally okay with, with, obviously, I did this, so I, I better be okay with it. Is because if we pass it in April or we pass it in August, doesn't matter because it doesn't take effect until one January. So we don't lose any, any six months of revenue, which at first I thought, I thought as soon as it passed, we started collecting. And, and I, I really want to get our emergency services people healthy in all areas. And I just don't think we can do that in four weeks. So I think if we, if we postpone it, bring it back up in April, that, if we bring this back up in April, that gives us, you know, four months before the election to do a good campaign so that citizens will understand why we really need this. Because anytime you're asking for a sales tax, um, I, I live in the city as, as all of us do. And I, I, you know, you've got to convince me why I should be willing to pay more taxes. And, and so I, I think we can do a really good job in April and have a great opportunity in August. So those are my reasons for asking to postpone it.
Okay, so we need a roll call on postponing that ordinance until April.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Blan? Thank you, sir.
Okay, our second ordinance of the night, proposed ordinance is amending penalties for nuisance violations, animal control. Tracy?
First reading. An ordinance amending chapter two fifteen of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville regarding certain animal control violations of the City of Waynesville, Missouri. Repelling conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending chapter two fifteen of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville regarding certain animal control violations of the City of Waynesville, Missouri. Repelling conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for the proposed ordinance? Councilman Rice?
Say.
Second, Councilman Farnum? Roll call for an approval of proposed ordinance?
Councilman Blan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden? Uh, Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gills?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Sorry, Don, you only get one.
I was, I thought I already won.
All right, our third proposed ordinance of the night. HB twenty twenty-five dash oh three, approving agreement for engineering services, TAP Grand, Bitten and Associates. Tracy?
First reading, authorizing the City of Waynesville, Missouri to accept a proposal with Bitten and Associates for engineering services regarding sidewalk improvements through a Transportation Alternative Program Grant, fixing an effective date. Second reading, authorizing the City of Waynesville, Missouri to accept a proposal with Bitten and Associates for engineering services regarding sidewalk improvements through a Transportation Alternative Program Grant, fixing an effective date.
Thank you.
Motion.
Councilman Farnum made a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Hayden. Roll call, please.
Councilman Blan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gills?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, our fourth proposed ordinance, HB twenty twenty-five dash zero four, approving grant funding, Missouri Department of Conservation, Highway seventeen trailhead. Tracy?
First reading, authorizing the City of Waynesville, Missouri to accept grant funding from the Missouri Conservation Department for the construction of a trail and trailhead at Highway seventeen north, fixing an effective date. Second reading, authorizing the City of Waynesville, Missouri to accept grant funding from the Missouri Conservation Department for the construction of a trail and trailhead at Highway seventeen north, fixing an effective date.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Councilman Hyatt, seconded by Councilman Blan. Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Sorry.
It's the same name, too.
No, it's, it's the same first name. It's in my head, I wanted to call him Ryan, but. Roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks, there, Rice?
See, it's catchy.
Hope it was in the air, I'm sorry.
It must be the bear.
First one, Rice, you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Blan? Thank you.
All right, number five, proposed ordinance, HB twenty twenty-five dash zero five, amending chapter six fifteen point one eighty, reconnection of discontinued service.
First reading, an ordinance amending chapter six fifteen of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville regarding reconnection of discontinued utility services. Repelling conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending chapter six fifteen of the Municipal Code of the City of Waynesville regarding reconnections of discontinued. reconnections of discontinued utility services. Repelling conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date.
Can I get a motion?
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Wait, you have.
Do we need a motion first for the question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, ask your question.
So is the disconnect date the same as the last day to pay your bill date?
No.
So if I'm on a disconnect for tomorrow, today was my day that I had to pay my bill by? Is that how that works? I don't know.
So you're not sure how to disconnect?
Yeah, how do you decide? How do you pick the day is what I'm asking.
Well, we usually always try to go where people get their, you know, the first part of the month, so I don't ever usually try to.
Right, but no, I mean, if today was the last day to pay my bill, when do I get, and I don't, when do I get my stuff disconnected?
Usually the following month, if necessary.
Oh, so it's a long time. That's what I was trying to figure out. Okay. It's not the day.
You usually have like at least three weeks, if not four.
Okay, that's all, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, now you have time.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Councilman Hayden, seconded.
Seconded.
Councilwoman Dills, seconded. Can I get a roll call, please, ma'am?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn?
Yes.
All right. Our sixth proposed ordinance, HB 2025-06, approving rezoning of 103 North Bates Street, R3 to C2.
Okay, first reading. An ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from R3 multifamily to C2 commercial for property located at 103 North Bates in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date. Second reading. An ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from R3 multifamily to C2 commercial for property located at 103 North Bates in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date.
Make a motion.
I second.
Farnum, Councilman Farnum made a motion. Councilman Hyatt, seconded.
I have a question. Where exactly is this?
Are you familiar with, I think it's called Lincoln Square?
Yes.
It's just to the east of Lincoln Square, so it is towards the police department from Lincoln Square. It just, so there is a vacant lot and then a house, and then Bates Street. So it's that vacant lot and house that above Bates Street.
Okay. Thank you. Can I get a roll call, ma'am?
Councilman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ooh, that was a lot. All right, we have no resolutions for tonight, so that takes us to see reconsider. This is conditional use RV park Whitmore Farms. Do we get a?
I think so.
Can you? We need a motion and a discussion on it.
I would.
You want to do it?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we table and allow for more discussion with the developer and more information. Postpone this.
Ma'am, I need a motion from a no vote.
Oh, wasn't a no vote?
I can't get a motion from a person, yeah, I'm sorry.
Good to know. I didn't know you wanted.
I was available last time, and I would make the motion what Mr. Hyatt just stated.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to postpone discussion of the conditional use RV Whitmore Farms until next month, so we have time to go through the committees with hopefully maybe the designer wanting to participate in committee discussions. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion for that? Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Councilman Hayden, seconded. Can I get a roll call?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Hayden?
Yes.
No, that's Hyatt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Glenn?
Thank you, I'm done.
We forgive you, you do not feel well.
You don't feel well.
I just want to point out, though, she sees the name tapes.
I don't.
Just.
You're doing fine.
Okay, so our next thing is other business. Anyone have other business for the meeting? Is something on the line, ma'am? No? Oh, okay. I thought you were thinking about it. All right, so we're going to do council comments. We're going to start down with you, sir, Councilman Glenn.
Since we have an audience, I guess I'm talking to the camera. Recently, our neighborhood experienced, recently, our neighborhood community experienced guidance by our company, our Sheriff's Department and many other sheriff departments to respond. Thankfully, no lives were lost, but this event underscores the urgency needed for the enhanced training, modern equipment and resources for our police department in our growing community. We must be proactive, not reactive. We must play offensive, not defensive. To effectively combat extreme threats, response to incidents of this nature, our police department needs to expand. We, as a growing community, must advance, advocate, we must advocate for increased support for our officers with the latest training in crisis management, also for newer modern life-saving equipment and additional staff. These actions will build trust between the community and the police through transparency, accountability and mutual respect. There will come a day when all of us will be asked what we can do to strengthen and protect our community. When that day comes, I ask that you all join us with a worthy cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman D.
Just a couple of things. I would just encourage everyone that watches this and has concerns, we read about as a council through, you know, socials and stuff like that all year, all month, but people really, really need to come and address the committee meetings. That's where we roll up our sleeves and the hard work is done. You know, I've talked to citizens who say, you know, I watch the council meetings and it's almost a rubber stamp. It appears that way up here because we've done all the hard work, just like this RV park that we're postponing. We're going to send it through each committee where the hard work will be done and we'll have a consensus. So, and like the lady I mentioned earlier, if you have a concern, please come to committee meetings. So that's number one. And then the second thing, and probably the most important thing I want to say all night, our street department guys, with the help of everybody in the city that had a CDL, kept our streets looking really good the last couple of weeks. I was out, I didn't ride with them, but I was out watching them, and, you know, they're coming through the neighborhoods at 3 o'clock in the morning and scraping ice and laying salt, and they did such a great job. I just think people don't understand how great a job they really do.
Thank you. Councilman Rice?
Yeah, I want to do the same thing. I want to thank all the Waynesville services, the utility services, the emergency services, police department, Chief Rodeo, Parks, Recreation, Animal Shelter and the street department. They did a wonderful job. Everything gets a lot harder when it gets cold, and that's when you need their services and lots, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to congratulate Bee White for her appointment to the deputy city clerk and Brad Halterman for his promotion to corporal. I think both of them were very well earned, and just want to say congratulations again.
Very beautiful. Thank you. Councilwoman Dills?
I just want to say ditto on what they said about the utilities department, roads and everything. Keep it in clear, we had an emergency in our neighborhood. The fire department was called. They couldn't make it up a hill. They called the roads and grounds for people, and they came out and plowed the road and prevented a major catastrophe there. So thank you.
Very nice. Councilman Hicks?
Yeah, I don't have a lot, but I'd just like to say that if anybody has any questions about the proposed tax, I would ask they reach out and ask, and I know I'm looking happy to have an open discussion about that, so.
Thank you. Councilman Farnum?
I just want to send my condolences to the Deering family. I served years ago with Dad Deering on city council and Lou Hardman. And Lou had made a comment about those old timers while we served 20-plus years ago. I hate to hear that kind of news about somebody that I knew. I worked in the courthouse for a while right across from, when she worked there in the collector's office, and she was a great lady.
Thank you all. Congrats again to Brad and Bee, wonderful stuff. I guess we should have asked Bee if she wanted to do it. I'm not really sure how that works, but now that we've already done it, are you okay with this? Oh, okay. Thank you, staff. Thank you for everything that you do. Absolutely the best staff around. And if you don't hear it enough from our customer base, know it. Just wear a smile with pride, knowing that you do everything that you can to make this city the best it can be. So I thank Mayor Shawn Wilson for being sick and letting me do this on the fly. Yeah, yeah. Thank you all for assisting me. It is very much needed, and I hope you have a wonderful evening. We are adjourned.